Good evening. The January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the West Springfield Planning Board is hereby called to order at six P M. In accordance with M G L Chapter thirty A, I must announce that anyone intending to tape the meeting must identify themselves to the clerk and provide his or her name and address for the record. And we inform those present that any document that is to be considered or discussed must be made a part of the record of the meeting and the original or copy must be submitted to the committee before there be any discussion regarding that document. Documents include photos, plans, drawings, computer printouts, and simulation, video presentations, and the like, as well as letters and written material. Why is my... Oh, I'm sorry. Are we gonna do the board reorganization first? So we don't blow it off this time? Go for it, Rand.
Well, one of you all has to make a motion to...
I'm okay with it the way it is unless someone wants to make a change.
We don't currently have a vice chair. If anybody is wanting to do that.
Jay, Bev.
What is that?
Jay. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Thanks for volunteering. Come on, these are easy. You're really better at the vice chairing.
Yeah, you're the closest one to be rude like me. You can sit up here. So that's it? That's all we need is?
I need a vote, so if someone could make...
Right, but I mean, that's all we're missing was the vice chair.
Oh, yes, yep, yep. Bev is the secretary, you're obviously the chair. So we just need a motion to nominate Jay as vice chair, Bev as secretary, and Frank as chair.
I would probably check my references.
I move, yeah, I move to nominate Frank Palangia as chairman, Beverly Brown as secretary, and Jay Lacass as the vice chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Jay, not you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, done. Okay. Number two. We don't really have any public hearings tonight, but we are continuing. Are we gonna go... Look, can we go right down there? We don't need to go through the minutes and stuff first, do we? Or should we?
I think you just should get them out of the way.
All right, go ahead.
I move to approve the minutes of the January fourth, twenty twenty-three Planning Board meeting as prepared.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance amendments? God, I can't talk. Subdivision regulations, anything?
No.
Nothing. Site plan review? Subdivision review, anything?
No.
Okay. So we have a other business tonight as we're continuing to discuss the Pyramid Company of Holyoke, Inc. zoning map amendment to change the zoning on a seventeen-point-six-six acre parcel on the northeast corner of Whitney Ave. and Highland Ave. from Residence A two to Residence C. I guess I'll... I'm gonna, I'm gonna start out. Just so everybody understands, there's... The public hearing was closed, so there is no participation from the audience or the petitioner tonight. It's a discussion amongst the board here and hopefully a decision to make a vote tonight, one way or the other.
Can I just add about Attorney O'Brien Scott's opinion? So apparently, one of the counselors had inquired after their meeting about whether or not a counselor who misses a meeting or a public hearing on a zone change is barred from participating in the matter and voting on it. And as it turns out, zone changes are legislative matter, not an adjudicatory or judicial matter. And therefore, the rule that applies that, you know, you must attend all the public hearings doesn't apply to this. So all of you may participate and vote on the matter tonight.
And just so everyone here and everyone listening understands that they did their... As far as I know, they did their due diligence and they watched anything they didn't participate in, which I thank them for that. And we'll move forward. I'm gonna start. I attended the council meeting last night, which was a little rough. It, it, it's tough. People don't understand the process. I don't think it was a very good job explaining the process. There's a couple, there's a couple things that I want to make clear again. I've said it multiple times, and I'm probably saying a couple more before the night's out. This is only a step towards, in this case, a possible project. They could get a zone change and never move forward with a project. The unfortunate part to that is the project could change. And for anybody that thinks that's not possible, it is. The control we have is where I think people don't understand. When and if this project comes forward, the, the, the audience, the public's gonna have every right to speak, which was misunderstood last night. Last night was not the last time they could speak. It was only talking about the zone change. If a project goes forward, that's when all the control takes place. That's when we can say you need sidewalks. That's when, you know, the water department or whatever can say, "I'm sorry, you don't have enough water pressure to run the fire hydrants. You're gonna have to put a pumping station in," or "you're gonna have to do this." And to answer some of the people's questions from last night, at their expense, the town will benefit from, whether it's this project or a twelve-house development going somewhere, the developer's expense is what takes care of those needed items. If there's not enough water to supply that street for houses, for an apartment block, for whatever it might be, that's the developer's issue. And unless they can provide that, they don't move forward. As far as some of the other issues with, with whether it's landscaping or someone brought up trash or... Those things can be talked about and conditions can be put on a plan at that point. Now, you know, as, as much as we'd love to make up all these rules that we could, we don't have the right to do any of that. We have to look at what's on the table, and that is only a zone change. And it's, it's difficult to look through that because there's always an opportunity for change. So again, just, just to be clear, this is all about the zone change. And if a project moves forward, which if they got the zone change, I'm assuming it would, then everybody has all the right in the world to speak again and bring all this concerns back up. Second thing I have is there is a misconception. And again, whether it was the petitioner or the council, I don't think there was a very good job last night explaining that Pyramid does not own the project. So when somebody gets up and starts bashing Pyramid because they can't fix an escalator in their mall, that has nothing to do with a project that may go forward. They are selling a piece of property, and another company is building and maintaining and owning this project, not Pyramid. No different than if any one of us wanted to sell a house to somebody. We sell our house or our piece of land. What they do from there, that's their issue with the powers to be. So just to be clear again, for all you guys listening at home also, Pyramid will not own the apartment complex when it's said and done. I clarified that with petitioner, and, you know, did I personally see any legal documents? No. All I can tell you is what I was told, and I was told that they are in contract with the company to build the apartments. They're involved until the zone change is done and the sale of the land is done. One more, and then I'll let somebody else go. I think as, as town employees, whether it be us or the council or anybody, we have an obligation to the town, city of West Springfield. We don't have an obligation to a room. Usually, you know, there's two sides and da-da-da-da, but unfortunately, in this case, the way it was handled and the way it was marketed, we had a room full of one-way. Which is fine. That's, that's everybody's prerogative. But the hard part for us is to look at you guys out there, whether friends, acquaintances or not, and decide what's right for the town, not just a room full of town members. And it's not easy. Not easy at all. As far as, you know, the town benefiting, I can tell you, if nothing happens moving forward on this piece of land, the property, nothing will improve over there. I can, I can almost guarantee you, just my personal opinion, no, no documentation or nothing, I can almost guarantee you that the traffic, the, the sidewalks, everything will stay the way it is. But if we move forward with some sort of project, whether it be this one or something else, we have an opportunity to ask for sidewalks, ask for whatever, cutoffs for bus stops. I don't remember everything everybody was talking about. Asking for some traffic studies, asking for some help with a intersection, whatever it might be. But we don't have that opportunity if we don't move forward with a pro, a project, whether it's this one or any other one. So I'm sure I'll come up with something else before the night's out, but see who gets their hand up fastest. Go ahead, Bev.
You know, I, I would just like to say that, you know, all of the concerns that have been brought forward to this committee certainly have been taken very seriously and want to thank everybody for the opportunity to allow us to really go back and examine all of the concerns that everybody brought forward because, you know, I, I think everybody here has traveled up to the area where this project is gonna be proposed and really took a good look at the site and all of the concerns that were brought forward as far as the sidewalks and the location. The intersection certainly has been a problem. I think it's like a V that's up at the top. It's Highland Avenue, I think, where the intersection is. So all of those things are certainly a concern for everybody here, and it's been a concern. I know, you know, as a lifelong resident, it's been a concern of mine for several years. And certainly, having said that, you know, I have to echo a lot of what Frank has said that if we don't move to make some kind of a decision on this, regardless of whether or not it moves in favor of a zone change or not, all your concerns really need to be addressed by the city of West Springfield at some point because it's been an ongoing issue for so many years. And then having said that, I think, again, echoing what Frank said is, if this does move forward, you know, we're a recommending board to either move the project forward or not move the project forward. But should it move forward, it gives everyone an opportunity to come back and really speak out at a site plan proposal from the developer. And I think that that really becomes a more important meeting for everyone to come and attend and really sit down and talk about their issues with the proposed or with the applicant. So again, I can go on, but I'd like somebody else to have an opportunity to speak to you.
Hi. One thing that I just want to say is at the city council meeting, as well as our meeting two weeks ago, a lot of people were bringing up the families coming into town. And I just want to say, I want families to come to West Springfield. This is a great town to be raising a family. We have a brand-new high school. We have Mitten Egg Park, Bear Hole. My favorite jewel is the library right across the parking lot. So when people say that it's gonna overcrowd schools, I wish that they wouldn't say that because I don't want families to think that we don't want them in West Springfield. With that being said, I have driven up Whitney Ave., up, down Prospect, up Highland. There was someone outside, I waved. I even sat in the Dunkin' Donuts, and I do have a concern with the traffic. I feel that when they're coming down with the V, the people coming from the Holyoke Mall, they're, they're not even looking to see if someone's coming the other way. I feel that without having a, a plan of what they're gonna do with the traffic, I can't be in favor of the zone change. So I just want to let you know.
I guess I'll, I'll echo instead of repeating most of what, what's been said up here already. I did watch the last meeting, and really, my concern, I, I liked the project that was proposed. I realize that's not what we're meeting on now, but that does, by default, make me in favor of the zone change. I liked the development. I liked what I saw. I liked the examples given of other developments that they did in that same style. Water, I guess, is the concern that I took away from, and it doesn't look like we could get clear information without somebody doing more work, whether that's our D P W. or whether it's engineering firms in terms of supplying the project with water as, as it was proposed, which is all I have to go off of. But the fact that the D P W. made written comments directly pointing to the water was notable to me anyway, because that's really the first time I can even think of in our, since I've been up here, that I've even seen that. So obviously, they have a red flag there with something, but the comments also didn't really note anything in detail that I could do much with, other than they waved a flag. So really, that, that's my concern. I do think traffic's an issue as, as well, but I think that's a, I think that's a town issue personally. And I also think that it's better now than it's probably been most of my life because the mall is not what it used to be, and I don't see that coming back either. I think crime is another issue in that area, which is not something that this would negatively impact, in my opinion. And I think it has a chance to actually probably help as well because there'll be, particularly if it's, if it's whatever they're branded as, luxury apartments or whatever, have your condos, whatever it ends up being, just having more activity of honest people and more eyeballs of people that are not involved in malicious activities is good in an area. It's the same kind of thing we benefit from in all of the recent, since COVID, really. It's been a blessing for Bear Hole because just that many more people down there, there's that many more eyes. And when you have that visibility, people that are doing things that would rather be done in the shadows will find another place to do it. And I like the idea of that, too. So those are the things that run through my mind in regards to the, the zone change, I guess. The water, I really do wish we had more information on that because that, that's really my hangup with it.
I don't have any more information on that specific project. We're bringing it up. Obviously, they're not able to make any concern, which then they have to decide whether how to work this to do it or not. I can tell you that if there's water problems, like just like a water problem, however, that they might set money on the curb.
Could you please turn on your microphone? So that, that got postponed. It still isn't developed. But eventually, that water came under the turnpike and that, at someone's expense, and I, I don't remember whose, whether it was a town or state or a developer, I honestly don't remember. But that's done now, and now there's not a, a water issue there. So if there is a water issue in this particular area and they decide to move forward, the water issue has to be taken care of, whether it's a pumping station, whether it's going under ninety-one like they went under the, the turnpike. I don't know. I'm not an engineer, but I can tell you that we've definitely had these issues before, and they're addressed if a project moves forward. They have to be. They have to be. So and, and I guess it's, it, it's the one that, again, is, is always an unknown is the traffic. I mean, you know, we could go back to a project that we approved a long time ago, and when we approved it, it was, there was nowhere near the car count there is there today. And now it's a nightmare, and it's like, oh, you guys made a mistake. Well, not with the information we had when we approved it, you know? And it, and it was great for a couple of years, and then it got busier and busier, and now it's a nightmare. And, you know, yeah, traffic will always be an issue one way or the other. But my personal belief at this point, there's so many other areas in town that need traffic, road, traffic light work that if we don't get money from somebody to help in this area, it's, I don't think it's gonna be on the top of a priority. You know, it might eventually get done. I would assume everything eventually gets redone, but I think we got a better chance of fixing some of these issues with somebody else's money than we do trying to get it done with town money. It will eventually, I would assume, but I could tell you, I think there's a lot of other areas in town that are probably in a different priority list or something. That's just my opinion. I couldn't, I didn't see no list, just for clarification. I'm just thinking out loud. Jay?
Yeah, I, I agree completely in regards to the, the traffic. And I wanted to add, and I'm just drawing a blank on the name of the apartments, but we have, Bev, you and I talked about it recently. Do you know the name of the, the what? Development? We talked about it when the original project was proposed. I remember touching on it then, too, because we were saying, you know, what is a, what is a luxury apartment or whatever have you? And we, we have some in town.
On the corner of the Lower Boulevard and Park Avenue.
I can't remember the name.
Oh, right, yeah, right at the bottom of the hill. That's the old original Fulham, I think, that originally developed that.
Yes, exactly. And, you know, when you, when you look at that place, and, I mean, I, I drive around town a lot, and, and so I kind of picture similar, different, but similar. I don't know how many apartments they have there, but I know it's a lot just by looking at it. Hundred sixteen? So, so even if it's a hundred, like, I don't know that I've ever noticed ever being held up with traffic or anything from that.
No, but there's, there's an intersection there. There's lights.
Well, right.
And that's kind of what you hope for when you move forward with any project, is that we improve the area.
That, that's kind of my point, is it could be engineered to do that. And, and there's room for that to be done, done there, to, to make the project go through. And if it wasn't addressed to handle the traffic flow, which you see in the traffic studies when you have a site plan review, that, that's kind of how you make that determination, which I guess is probably the point in why you're bringing it up because that, that doesn't affect the zone change, that affects the site plan review.
We could turn, we could say no to the site plan review. Because you know what? We don't like your traffic study or your traffic plan. And, and we could drag that out for however long we needed to to get them to do or hope to do a little bit more than maybe they proposed. But we definitely, I, I don't, I don't think, again, this is, it's a difficult time to be asking what you're gonna do to fix a traffic problem that isn't there yet from that project. I mean, there's obviously a traffic issue there. I, I don't know. I, I, again, been doing this so long that I don't think, if this gets shot down, I, I don't think we're gonna, in two months, be talking about doing all kinds of traffic lights and fixing a place that's been a mess for twenty-something years. It just isn't, I don't think it'll happen. I, I think the only shot we have at getting it somewhat better is to put some sort of project in there, whether it's twelve houses or hundred-and-sixty apartments or a factory. We have some control over, please help us with this issue. I'm just rambling, so someone else talk.
I think the reality of that is a, a project that was in the ballpark of twelve houses couldn't justify the investment that would have to be made to the traffic where if you have a bigger development, it's easier to make that justification.
Hence why no one...
Right, exactly.
Used it as residential property.
But also, I mean, to, to state the obvious, but that's also not, that's not what we do up here. We're voting on a zone change. That's not what we do up here. We're not making that decision. That's not up to us. So it's, it's a zone change. Are there, so are, are there... I'm trying to think of things that weren't answered in, in the meeting last time to be respectful of people's time. I mean, is there, is there a downside to the board? Is there, is there a downside that anybody sees to going to the Zone R C up here that hasn't been stated? Does anybody see a downside? You, you noted traffic, so that's valid.
To not go, to not go to it?
Yeah, is, yeah, do you, do you see? Yeah, do you see a downside to it?
I, I have concerns about the traffic. I do have concerns that nine-point-six percent of the water source is gonna go to the apartments. I have no issue with luxury apartments or whatever, if that's what we're, you know, planning. My daughter lived in some in Boston, and they did not have garages, and they were beautiful. They were beautiful. But the, those, the traffic is my main concern, and I did have a concern with nine, nine-point-six percent of our water sources when they're... And that's not sewer water. That is just shower, dishes, things like that. So that has also been a concern.
So I just, I think it's been mentioned a couple of times, and I want to clarify the comment that was made from the water department. The figure that was stated was the percentage of available water for new development. So it's not the town-wide water usage. It's, we're allowed to take so much water from the wells, the state regulates it. And based upon that cap and what we're currently using, there's, you know, that difference of what's remaining available for new development. And this, as proposed, was around ten percent of that remaining available water.
Right. Ten percent of what's remaining, not ten percent of a total. So that's really not, and that was a problem. Nothing, you know, there was so much unclear that... And that was very unclear.
I called on it, yeah.
This is new tonight.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's what they said, but they don't...
But I mean, they said that it was nine-point-six percent that was gonna be used. I have my notes in, in it, but it's ten percent of what we have left.
So the, the written, the written comment, which I know I read out loud, but I, I understand it's easy to misinterpret, was based upon existing availability of drinking water for new development. The town is limited to two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand gallons. This new construction will consume more than twenty-one thousand gallons, which is about nine-point-six percent of the available drinking water.
That's a big difference than what I think a lot of people thought. You know what I mean? That's, that's huge. Unfortunately, I think everybody was blindsided. I mean, it, it just, I don't think everybody was prepared to, to see the opposition we saw and, you know, scuttled to get information out and tried to get the right information, everybody, and it was tough. But I don't think the water is as big of an issue as we, a lot of people really thought it was. I think, you know, it's kind of like the, the, the residents don't understand all the time the process that we have to go through. And it's, you know, it's our job to explain that to them. Again, I'm rambling. Anybody? Go ahead.
I, I mean, I guess I was and, and still am in favor of the project that was proposed earlier. I like the idea of it, and by default with that, that means I'm in favor of the zone change as well, subject to, you know, the things that we've talked about. I would want to see a traffic study. I wouldn't want to see traffic addressed. I would want to see the water clarified and, and really figured out. But that's all site plan review stuff. That's not zoning stuff. And so with what we're here to make a recommendation on tonight is, is the zone change, in which case I'm in favor of it. I haven't heard anything, and I don't know that I would, I don't see what else I would to make me not in favor of the zone change. The project is where I would need more information, so I don't know if anybody else...
You might be a little bit tougher then. You gotta be, I mean, that's...
And you gotta be. And you gotta be. But that's also when you get to ask the questions. I mean, you, you can't ask the questions of how do you address the traffic when we don't even have a project in front of us? How do you address the water when maybe there's only two units that get built? And obviously, I don't think that's gonna be the case, but you can't even have the conversation because you don't even know what variables you're working with. But am I okay with the project as proposed, provided that they would deal with traffic and provided that there was enough water? Absolutely. So I, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I don't want to cut anybody else off if there's more discussion required.
Ryan, you got nothing?
I generally am very few words. No, I mean, we, look, when we, people aren't gonna invest in, you know, the, the town. They're not gonna invest in like a huge, like presenting the site plan now, you know, when they just need a zoning change, because they're not gonna do this if they don't get the zoning change. So we're never gonna get the full picture right up front because these are always conditioned on, you know, a favorable recommendation. You know, we, we worked with the Starbucks. Everybody had a lot of problems. Everybody thought the, the, the traffic would be the death knell. thought the, the, the traffic would be the death knell. I, I don't think the traffic is really even that bad. When new people move in, or when new projects are brought in, there, there is an adjustment, there will be a traffic adjustment. But if you recall, even with the Starbucks, that was really hotly contested, and they, you know, we, we said you have to create a plan, and they created an 18-car drive-through, that's something I've never even seen. So we, we do have the authority later to, to be stricter with our requirements. I, I think at this stage in the game, I did, I did watch the entire, you know, meeting beforehand. Traffic, it's always a concern, I, I haven't, you know, seen, since I've been on here, any of the decisions we've made leading to huge issues with, with traffic. And then the water, again, if, if they can't figure it out, we don't, you know, it doesn't have to be approved later. So I like this idea, I, I like, my worry originally was that it could flip the other way, and that, you know, they wanted to build luxury, and it could turn into something, you know, people were concerned about crime, I think you have less of an opportunity, or less when you're having families and young professionals who are going to invest in the Riverdale, like, restaurants and invest in the community, versus if they, you know, flipped, and you had, you know, more of a low-income housing, you know, where, where crime traditionally results in some of these areas. So I, I like that idea of bringing in, you know, families, like you had said, you know, a, a market rate, market rate apartment complex. I do think it'll start to improve the area. You know, I, I've, I, I live in this town, I've traveled that area, you know, there's, some of it's not the, the best, and I don't mean that to be offensive to anybody, so I'm, I'm, I don't, you know, I, I liked the plan when they came in front of us before. I, I did watch the, the, the meeting, I, I, I am very happy to see people come out to these meetings, I actually enjoy the, the public comment, I enjoy, you know, I'm glad to see people exercising that. I think, I wish more people would come out to a lot of these meetings, because sometimes we hear after the fact, why'd you do that? And no, nobody showed up and voiced their opinions. I, I'm, I was actually happy to see a full house.
You can say that you enjoyed them beating me up, too, you know?
No, no, yeah, no.
I did, I'd like to be on record with that.
Good, sometimes it needs to be kept honest.
That's right.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I, I did take it then to heart, I took the concerns to heart. I, I just think over the, the course of this, where we're at now, a favorable recommendation is only going to move the, the plan forward. I think the, the project itself is a good idea. So I guess there's a disagreement with people who don't think the project, I think the project's a good idea. Some of those issues, like you had brought up, traffic or water, they, they, we, we do need to be strict later, you know, and, and making sure those get addressed, but I, I do think that's for down the road. I think overall, bringing an apartment complex, you know, that can bring new families, you know, you know, new residents to the town, is, is a good idea. So I'm obviously going to be moving to, or voting to, for a favorable recommendation.
I, I want to just to add, add one more thing to, you know, you, you brought up what could happen, or, you know, it's, it's, at this point, it's obvious that residential property, it's been zoned that way forever, and nothing's happened there. So there's a, a fair bet that that will never happen, as far as I can see. So there's two options left. A decent, whether you want to call them high-end, whether you want to call them luxury, or whether you want to call them mice, whatever you want to call them, you got that opportunity, which is somewhat, is what they're talking about, and you also got the risk of, you know, a project going in where the, where the government gets involved, and we put a 40B in there.
And we have no, we have no say.
And we have no say at that point, so. It, it gets, it's, yeah.
It's not, it's not like you just go like that.
No, but it's, we have less control of that, but it does, it does. But again, we're here about a zone change, and you guys, I, I'm sorry, sir, there's absolutely no participation from the audience, so I don't want you to hurt your arm there, but can't, can't do it. I, I got nothing else. Allison, you got anything else from the town?
I moved to favorably recommend the proposed zoning amendment to change the zone from, of 17.66 acres of owned, acres owned by the Pyramid Company of Hoyok, located on the northeast corner of Whitney Ave and Highland Ave, from RA2 to RC. Excuse me.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? We make a positive recommendation to the city council. Because, again, city council has the last word, so, and as I've said in the past, and I mentioned to you, if, can't do it now, but if, anytime you want to talk, she has my contact information, you know where I am, have no problem talking to anybody.
It's not on public record.
We can't. I mean, it's all over now, I mean, I guess you could say something, but it's, it's, is, the public hearing's closed, and you're really, there's nothing much, nothing can go into the record from, from, I mean, it's still live, it's still streaming, so it's, unfortunately, it's, it's closed. All right?
I do think the council kept the public hearing open, right?
They did.
Yeah, I mean, what was said last night is, public, they, they kept the public hearing open, but it'll be for new information only, and new, you know, they weren't going to just keep having the same people come up and speak. Whether that changes, that's up to the council, nothing to do with us, but that's what was said last night, so if anybody wants to speak at that meeting, try and get yourself some new information, something that hasn't been reiterated, and they'll be, they'll be more than glad to let you speak. But that's it. You got anything else? Motion to adjourn? Hold on, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Good night, West Springfield.